Motion open.
So moved.
Second.
Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any board and committee reports?
I have one from the Newbury Rec. Committee. We met last night. And they have a request, I'm just gonna pull it up and read it. They would like-
Is the request to us?
Yes, so it'll come. I'm just giving my report here, but I think Alan's gonna have to go, doesn't have to do this, but. So they would like, um, the Recreation Committee would like to promote the seasonal users of the properties under our jurisdiction by installing signage that identifies the field's name and location and below on separate slats the names of each of the organizations. Slats feature design will allow for the additional teams to be added. The signage will be about ten feet tall, what code limits are with uniformed design, including font. The signage will be placed in such that it provides appropriate visibility without sacrificing the safety or aesthetics of the area. Funding to come from the Recreation Committee budget. If approved, it is the intention that the committee can have the initial signage in place by April 1st. We hope to consider your request, we hope you consider this request. They don't have drawings yet, but they're envisioning two granite or wooden pillars ten feet tall, about ten feet apart with an oval palette. Says man to field, Newbury Mass, established date. And then on the slats, they'll be proud home of all the groups that use that field. Go to my soccer, Triton Soccer, Triton Use Lacrosse, Triton Park Water, Triton Charing, and then whatever else comes and uses it.
So when everything's all done, you're gonna maybe bring it to the board, you mean?
Yeah, they, yeah, I think it's really up to us to decide whether we put signage there or not, so they're gonna-
Pretty sure it's gotta go through Sam for us. He's the bill inspector, he's always in charge of the signs.
Well, he's also in charge of the signs. Martha, what's, what's, what do you get to do on that? Does it go to Sam or can we do it?
Um, well, there is a sign by law, it probably makes sense to check the same information.
Should it come to the planning board?
Um, you know, I don't, I don't think so.
I think that's just direct.
I don't think it would, yeah, I think it would just be Sam.
Sam.
You know, if it were part of a site plan review, then it would come to the planning board as well, but just-
And where are they thinking of putting it?
I don't know, there's some thoughts. It has to be visible from the street, so. They're just in the beginning stages of this, they'd like to have it up by April 1st, so. I think come January after this holiday, we should walk out there and see what their thoughts are. And then if you could give us a drawing, I think it would be helpful to them.
Yeah, and what, I mean, since you were at the meeting, what exactly, why do they feel it's important and worth investing?
I think the elite soccer teams, groups that they, uh, that rent our fields, that we're the home of them in the whole Northeast region, they consider these their home fields. I think it's important to them to have signage. Um, I think it's important to the youth groups that, um, that use our fields. I think it's, I think it's just part of, um, ownership. You know, ruhaha, this is our home field and-
Okay, I mean, when you gave that list, it seemed like it was almost just an extension of Triton at that point. And so I was like, hmm, that doesn't, doesn't seem like a worthwhile investment, but-
Well, it's not, they're really not Triton, they're Triton, but they're not part of Triton School, School District. It's before that, it's the beautiful, so Triton was past.
They don't touch pricing too, so.
Yeah, they'll have to figure out the Triton name.
Right, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, uh-
You know what, you're just getting started on these search, and I think it probably has some merit because you wanna keep people coming to the field, so when you further along, certainly. If it is after Sam, our purview, bring it to the board, we'll definitely look at it.
Okay.
Thanks, Alicia.
You're welcome.
All right, I have a very long report, report of the chairman, Walker, and on and on and on, but really what it is, I just need a motion to sign the payroll.
Motion is on.
And the payroll is inside, so I need a motion.
So moved.
You don't need a motion.
Well, I thought I needed a motion.
You just need to report it, because this is the new, um, policy that's been developed. They already voted that you would be the one, you already had a motion to sign that you'd be the one. But now you have to come, every time you sign a bill or payroll or anything like that, you have to report that you did it.
All right, I'll report to everyone that I did it, and you can see my name on, inside your packet.
I saw it.
How's that, pretty good?
Yeah.
Thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome. Public hearings, non-tendering sport tonight, none, new business. We have a public property use request, Rick Morrell.
Okay.
Yukon Sports, Rockport Mass, Yukon Road Race, it is July 9th to 17th, 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM. Do you wanna tell us anything about it? You can stand here in front of the camera, and it's free advertising.
Well, I'm Rich Morrell, I'm organizing a road race in July that would start and finish at Triton High School. It would head over into West Newbury, and then turn around and circle back. Basically down and back on Central Street. On the return, they would take a left on Orchard and make a big loop, go across Thurlows Bridge, and then back to the high school from there. Start at 8:00 AM, put a three-hour limit on the course, so they'd have to finish by 11:00. We already met with police and fire, and got their approval.
Me too, very good.
We met with police and fire in West Newbury, and the West Newbury Board of Select as well, and have approvals from all of them. So, we're here tonight to your permission as well.
So I'll need a motion, and I have in discussion, someone will wanna talk about how it's lined. Do you wanna start that, Alicia or Damian?
Do you have any paint you want me putting on the road?
No, we, uh, we know better. We have some corrugated plastic signs that we put up on telephone poles.
Perfect.
And we have volunteers that stand on the intersections to tell the runners which way to go, but we don't ever put paint in the roads.
How about chalk, do you put chalk or?
Nothing on the roads.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
How long is the race?
Uh, thirteen point one miles, it's a half hour and a half.
Well, good luck with it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
You're all approved, thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Merry Christmas.
Thanks, you too.
Thank you.
Appointments, 12/13/2006 to 6:30/2019. Leslie Haley, and she's gonna be records access officer. Elaine DeVoe would be finance records officer. John R. Lucy Jr. would be police department records access officer.
Motion to approve all, second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Review of proven signs, these are like a license renewals for 217. I'm gonna abbreviate as I go through, Parker River Pub. Oh, we're gonna take one motion on all of them, if you wanna hold one out for any reason.
Stay hold.
Stay hold. Parker River Pub, Old Town Country Club, is it Friggin' Em, or Paradine Beverage Solanovic? Family Associates Pizza Factory, that's Palmyra and Provisions, Palmyra and Fine Wine. Doing businesses, Norae and Patel, doing businesses, Bram, C1 LLC. Palmyra Grill, The Butchery, Oldbury Country Club, and, excuse me?
Golf Club.
What did I say, Golf Club?
He said country.
Country Club, good. And Palmyra Beach Comer, I probably won't vote, because I actually work for the country club, so, but-
Golf Club.
Chairman doesn't have to vote, so.
All right, so go ahead.
Uh, motion to approve all, second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
And once again on these, I will probably not vote, because my wife has one in the mix. 217 business license renewals as follows. We'll do the same thing, if you wanna hold one, say so, and if not, we'll vote as one. Palmyra Taxpayers Association, Barrett Transportation, Steve's Service. Again, Steve's Service, one used car, one repaired. Store, you self-self storage, Walton's Auto Lab. Auto Law, I imagine it's Auto Lab, right?
Yeah.
Auto Lab. Auto Works of Hampton Falls. Barry Davis, which would be BB Automotive, American Automotive, Kyle Capalupo for her parking lot. Harmony Nature Learning Center, The Bond, Josette's Ads and Loom, Hank Moore, Treasure of Old Newbury Golf Club, and Parker River Pub and Grill, Riverfront Marine and Beach Dog Daycare. One more.
Motion to approve all.
Ball's on.
Motion to approve all.
Second. Any discussion, all over favor?
Uh, I do have a brief thing in discussion, which is not really about those, but Wesley was hoping at some point that we might look into trying to get more of our businesses in town to actually get their business licenses. Is there a number, I'm sure we all know a few people in town who have businesses who don't have their, haven't filed a license, and so I've talked with Ginny a little bit about ways we can encourage that. She'd suggested potentially making, getting, building permits and things like that be a requirement of being in good standing, which would include having your business license, having your taxes paid up. So, wanted to just put that out there as something that I've been asked to look at by the, by the time per, and I don't know if any of us can feel as far-
And one thing, you're on TV, so it's kind of letting me go forward, yeah.
Getting it, yeah, out there, so.
It's always easier to do at the beginning than probably ultimately, you know, two, three years from now, so.
Is there a fee to a business license?
Yeah.
I think it's fifty dollars.
No, it's different for each type.
Oh, it's different for each type, I'm sorry.
And you don't have to be scared of them.
The one that I found, fifty dollars.
Ellen shot tonight, she's-
Yeah, she's on a game, Vanessa.
Now we have a little discussion, it'll be kind of fun. We have to decide, because of the results of the ballot election, we have to decide whether we have a special town meeting or we wait to bring, um, our, our, our decision back to the annual town meeting. So, we also can maybe discuss some of the thoughts of what we're gonna bring back. But first, I think, why don't we try to get through the fact of, what does the Board of Selectmen want to do? Do they wanna wait to the annual town meeting, or would you like to have a special town meeting? It's open for discussion. And if you wanna make a motion and then discuss it then, it's up to you guys to, would it be cleaner?
I know your preference is to have the special town meeting, so, I mean, why don't we move to hold a special town meeting?
All right, make a motion, don't make this, but.
I move that we hold a special town meeting.
Is there a second?
A second.
Discussion.
I can see a lot of validity in, in having a meeting just about this, to try and clarify. I don't know, I think there are some, the biggest issue with a special town meeting that's solely about this is we need to do a lot of legwork to make sure we get the people there. You know, if we don't get enough people in, it's harder to pass, and it's, you know, harder to get a quorum.
I don't think you're gonna have to worry about that with this issue.
Is that it? Go ahead, maybe else?
And then the other, the only other question is when to have it. So.
And what do you ultimately gain by having the special town meeting? You're gonna, it's gonna take a couple of months to get it up and running. The annual town meeting's only, what, three months after that, so you're gonna gain three months. Is it really worth the expense and the effort? Just a thought.
Yeah, I think, um-
And it's, and it's during budget time.
Everyone's mind is wrapped around it. I felt at that last meeting, we slashed through every question on that quorum till we got to those last two. That was the only thing on anyone's mind that night, for real. I think we can fill the room. This process has taken so long, I don't see any benefit in waiting. I think people get tuned out. I just, I, I think the time is now, I think everyone's focused on this, and I think it's an issue that deserves it till tonight.
I think it's a, I think it's a pretty big article. And I wrestle with both sides of it, but my concern is that if we put it with the, at the annual town meeting, I mean, we could be there all night. I mean, I think that it deserves a good conversation. And the thing, if we put it in with the annual town meeting, it's gonna get lost in the budget process, it's gonna get lost in a minute.
I don't know that it'll get lost.
I mean, I heard, you know, having one issue, it made a little sense. I think mechanisms to make sure that people realize that we're having a town meeting are important for us to discuss. And I also think, you know, beside the newspaper and all the things we have, you know, what can we use to get the message home? You know, I don't know, what's legal? What, what can we use that the town can send, you know, the fact that we're having a meeting home?
Susan's doing a pretty good job for us now.
Well, whatever we can. And-
Well, the town can't advocate.
Timing, timing.
The town?
We can advocate coming to meetings.
We can just advocate coming, we can put the meeting over there, we can't advocate coming to set, yeah.
That's right, that's exactly, don't, trust me, that's exactly what I mean.
So we can put it on the Facebook page, we can put it on the TV channel.
Is there something we can send out? I don't know.
Mail in?
Mail in, but just remember, we need to discuss those things, the minute we set a date, we better make sure they're set and up and ready to go. And I think choosing a date is gonna take a little thought, because, you know, on vacations, you know, people go skiing, people go to Florida, you know, what would be the best time?
We can't be a rush.
And if we get to the end of February, we might as well wait to the annual town meeting. So January's probably gonna be the time we have to have it, I should imagine.
Do we have time to do it in January? You gotta advertise it, you gotta-
Martha's gonna be fourteen days.
Well, it's gotta be posted, it's gotta be posted two weeks ahead of time as well, so. It would have to be, if you're gonna do it in January, you'd have to do it at the end of the month and get it posted.
Right, okay.
Right after New Year's. And really get the word out, to make sure that you get a good turnout.
Don't wanna talk at once.
I think neither do we.
I mean, I'll say this, to help you. I was super handy. I mean, but I can, at first, I mean, I've thought a lot about it, I've listened just to what people have said tonight and some of the enthusiasm, and what Jay I said, and what you said, and Alicia. But then I go back to logistics, so I'm caught in the middle.
Yeah. I mean, one. As, as everyone knows, um, this is not my favorite proposal for the solution to our problems. But one thing about having a special town meeting is that if we pass it in a special town meeting, we can start to move on to addressing the fact that we'll be short funding the renovations for town hall, and we won't be doing anything for the fire station. So we can start to move on to phase two, phase three, right away, as opposed to muddying the potential waters of an annual town meeting. Because, you know, we know we have expenses coming up there, you know, we have the garage door failure, you know, and we're lucky that no equipment or people got hurt by that, you know, there's. We're gonna have to do some patching, and then we have to come up with a solution. And since the board has opted not to try and solve all three at once, we need to start the process of solving the other two problems as quickly as possible, so. You know, I think one of the advantages, if we get the funding, at least set aside for the police station, and then we start working on how to solve the other problems.
I think one of the things that set us back in the beginning was the fact that people were afraid of the total cost of putting things together. I have found out that Raleigh has not combined Fire and Police, but it is actually two separate buildings.
But they're only hiring one of them.
But it's still two separate buildings.
And they got a pretty good grant for it.
One, one thing that, it will get cloudy if, if the police station and the renovation of town hall is the focus, which has been the focus now for a while. We obviously know that the fire station needs certain things. No more, no less, then the highway bond still needs certain things, no more, no less than roads and maybe the rounds, I mean, we have a lot of these for the project throughout the town. So, sometimes lumping everything together doesn't solve everything, but we certainly are starting maybe by getting at least some architectural engineering done, getting a scope of cars for the police station and town hall, we're starting to solve at least, gosh darn it, something. But I don't think the town should ever lose fact, of the fact, certainly the police station is still there, certainly there's bridges, certainly there's highway bonds, certainly there's schools, certainly there's roads, the sky is falling.
Yeah.
So, but at least we're solving two things, or beginning to solve two things, and it's certainly bad enough.
Yeah, I mean, for the people, and I know we've come up against the cost thing, people keep saying it costs too much, but, you know, we're not paying it out of pocket, we're paying it essentially on the credit card, it doesn't, you know, if you were doing a job site, and you sent somebody to the store with five bucks to buy three things that you needed, and they only had those five dollars, they'd come back empty-handed, because buying nails, when you need nails two by fours with plywood, doesn't make sense, buying plywood by itself doesn't make sense, and buying two by fours doesn't make sense. That's a little bit of what the, I think, some of the way people are thinking, is we can't afford all these things, so we shouldn't do it, but we are actually in a good financial situation. We've done a lot of legwork to reduce the cost of the borrowing, we can't reduce the cost of the projects.
So the third week in January, third Tuesday would be the seventeenth. That would give us four weeks, a little over. Won't interfere with our second and fourth meetings. Just throwing it out there.
Yep.
Chair, Alicia, Martha, anyone, you know, Alan, can we think of anything that schools do? Does anything else go on? We do have something in the back of our packet about the school meeting, so we're gonna change it from an early meeting to maybe the tenth, I mean, is there anything that we're missing at the third week instead of the second week?
Yeah, I think January's pretty good, people are around.
And that the third Monday is Martin Luther King Day, I don't know if that would impact people if they're going for extra long weekends.
What is Monday?
Martin Luther King's Day.
Oh, the holiday. It is, yeah.
Well, that's a holiday when people are in school, so, isn't it?
No.
No.
I thought we had school, 'cause I thought we had to study in here.
No.
They do that before.
Okay, well, I mean, I wonder, we've talked a little bit about trying to hold meetings on days when there aren't school days. What if we did it on a Monday, I mean, traditionally on a Monday, Tuesday.
No, I wouldn't mess with that.
No.
My days, people get down, I think they'll be called back to school on the seventeenth.
You're gonna miss a, a lot of people are gonna be mobile.
Okay, I mean, it's just that, though-
The only thing that I'm wondering is, when is Governor's back?
Well, I think they might be out for pretty much the whole month. I'm not sure.
Now, what role does, does that have?
The people who live at Governor's Academy that are residents.
A lot of them don't vote.
Well, that doesn't make it right.
I'm, I'm just saying that they should, like, since they don't pay taxes, they should vote.
Chestnuts.
But there are people who are trying to get the word out to, to them that they are residents of the town and should vote, so.
They pick up the phone and call 911, the police department will come to their, help rescue, just as quickly as they come to the border line.
I completely agree with you, I try and get them to vote.
Yeah.
So, you know, the residents-
Let me ask you this, Jeff, what, what's against the-
Yep.
Why did you choose third week?
What, yeah, what's against the twenty-fourth?
Well, it's just, we're trying to get it done as quick as we can, and so, nothing against the twenty-fourth, you wanna put the twenty-fourth on?
Let me see if I can get it.
Totally minimal, yeah.
Yeah, I'm trying to check the Governor's calendar, but you know.
Yeah, we're gonna go on that one.
I, like Jeff originally, was for the, wait till the annual town meeting, but. You know, the more I ask in the coffee shops, the more I ask in the streets, they're saying, no, no, get a, get a special town meeting, do it, do it.
Is that who you're hearing?
Yes, I am, yes, I am.
Bouncing it off of people, I get the same reaction.
Yeah.
All right, let's talk about the week that includes the seventeenth, or waiting to the week after. I think the Governor's Academy, one way or the other, just might be, uh, 'cause it doesn't mean that those folks would be going away. So, let's, um, I think January's probably the best time to do it. So, why don't we make a motion, someone, Chuck or someone else, and we'll discuss it, and then we'll set a date.
We already have a motion for it.
Did you make it? Did it give seconds?
It's a second meeting, yeah.
So, so now we would set the date, which I would say, I think the later date gives us a little more time to get people there, so I'll move that we set the date on the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, thanks. Are we gonna the thirty-first, thirty-first is Tuesday too?
I think, the twenty-fourth gives everyone enough time back from the holidays, get their feet on the ground.
Martha, are there any, any red flags on the twenty-fourth? Um, Jen, can you think of any out there? Alan?
Well, I think that with the holidays and what you have to prepare for a special town meeting, there's a lot of preparation that we need to do.
I think the thirty-first might be a little more time.
So we're, we're being, we're being a little cavalier, you mean?
Yeah.
We're just making happen.
Yeah, so, all right.
I think that we'd still allow you to have it in January, we just give everybody a little more time to prepare.
All right, so let's move to the third first.
Sounds, sounds good.
And then this way, it won't interfere with our meetings.
Make a, make a motion, make a motion for the date.
I have a motion that we hold a special town meeting on January thirty-first, 2017.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion?
The other consideration would be if you're gonna hold it at this elementary school, what they're, if they have anything in their calendar for that night.
I have to check that out.
All right, so let's make it that date.
I wanna go on that one and check that one, hold on a second.
Let's make it that date.
Yeah, I know, but I'll see if anything's posted.
Respective to the fact that we might have to change it, 'cause we might not have every little thing.
I'm gonna have all of it, because-
An issue this important might be worth flocks of an event at the elementary school.
Depends what it is, I know, but it depends what it is.
Just say it. In terms of what it is, yeah.
So the thirty-first, yeah, right now on the school calendar year, there's nothing on the thirty-first. The high school has half-days, twenty-five, um, twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven.
What day is that, the thirty-first?
Half-days for conferences.
It is a Tuesday.
Yeah, so the thirty, I think the thirty-first is a better day for us.
Well, I don't think we have many days afterwards.
Seventeen, that feels funny, right, the seventeen, now?
All right.
No, the thirty, I think the thirty-first, right, that's what we're talking about?
We're talking about the thirty-first, so do we keep it in January?
No, the seventeenth.
Okay.
Two thousand seventeen.
Ah, sorry.
All those in favor?
All my fault, sorry.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Good.
And can I contest, will be the same verbiage as was in the warrant for the last meeting?
That would be a question for a legal person, I'm tracing, she's not here, so.
But you're not changing anything, right?
No, no, I don't think so.
You're asking for the same thing.
Yeah.
And what happens, are you allowed, are those petitioners gonna be allowed to tap into a special meeting?
I don't know.
You don't know what that, what that'd be like?
I've asked the town council that, to try and get clarity, and she was in today, but I couldn't catch up with her.
Call off with her, yeah.
So, she's got the question, we're trying to figure it out.
Okay.
Also, whether or not it can be amended, since it was already at a previous town meeting, and people voted on an assumed number, so I don't know if it can be, if the number on the warrant can be changed per normal rules of order. So, normally you could, the floor can go down or up.
You can't go up.
No, we can't, I think we can go up because of the ballot.
Oh.
No.
And you can't go up from what's posted on a warrant, you can't go up.
We're staying right where we are.
You're staying where you are, okay.
Citizens' concerns.
Citizens' concern.
Hearing and seeing, correspondence, there's a lot of it. Some of it is pretty straightforward, like the fact that Henry F. Rowe has made a recommendation. I think it's a recommendation worth definitely looking at, I don't know, um, how things like this proceed, but I think that- I don't know, um, how things like this proceed, but I think that, uh, the fact that he has suggested that is a good suggestion. I don't know if there's gonna be a road, or I don't know if there's gonna be some property. I don't know what could be coming up for the naming. It is Arthur C. Mills of Newbury was a sergeant in the United States Army Air Forces, five oh four bomber group. He was a member on and on, flew a hundred missions on the, and on the night of March sixteenth and seventeenth, nineteen forty-five, their B twenty-nine, and it was a heavy bomb that was lost. My father was in those planes in fifty-seven, I guess, or whatever it was. So, um, he's talking about remembering him somehow in the form of a street or a park. And I think that that's actually a nice gesture. I don't know how these things go, but Alan, could you do note that? And maybe when something like that comes up, whatever process, whether it's just a vote of the selectmen or whatever else, if we have something like that that has a, a need, then it's a good suggestion to hold the bans.
Yeah, and maybe also get ahold of Donnie and see if he wants to work with them, because they, Donnie might have some other ideas for them.
Yeah. All right, a letter from Dina, Triton Regional School Committee. We are starting a budget process. They've had trouble, as I read this, trying to synchronize among the towns the best dates. And if you go to the last paragraph, it seems that they're talking about this year. We are formally scheduling to hear the presentations on Monday, January ninth, through Wednesday, January eleventh, starting at six P M. on each night. As a result, I believe there will be a conflict with both Raleigh and Salisbury on Monday and Newbury on Tuesday. So I'm thinking, why are you having it at that time? But that's okay. And they're asking for us to maybe change the date of our selectmen's meeting, as I understand it. Is there any way for your meeting to be scheduled for Tuesday, the seventh, to be adjusted, uh, Tuesday, the tenth, to be adjusted? And once, I feel this way, I have no problem trying to adjust a meeting, we've done it before, to go to something as important as the Triton Regional School District budget sessions. Before we make that recommendation, because it seems like we have a little time, I would wait to make sure, maybe Alicia or someone to find out, does it seem that they're totally set on those dates? Do you know?
We're going, Damon and I, Damon and I are gonna be there on Thursday night.
So find out if, if those are the dates, then we'll change it.
Yeah, um, I used to be on the high school council, um, so I think middle school council as well. Um, so I think what happens is they ask the school councils, um, for their recommendations of what is need, what they feel their schools need. Elementary schools, all three of them, in the middle of the line. And then that's what these are, these three nights. That's why there's five schools, that's why it's all spread out over three different days. And so they would really like towns to participate in listening to what the needs of the schools are, and try to help understand why the school district comes up with the budget that they come up with.
But like I said, we can get some clarity as I look at that. Salisbury has, and Raleigh have a conflict on maybe one or two nights.
Yeah, they have their voice-up meeting on Monday.
So, I mean, are they gonna cancel theirs? If not, they're only gonna make two of the nights. Do we need to cancel ours and still make two of the nights? I don't know. I don't know how much connectivity it means to go to all three nights.
Let, let me get clarity on that tomorrow.
Before we go about making a motion. All right, thanks.
Chairman, I'm gonna treat you to this before she left tonight, and this is about the District Communications Committee. And they would like the board of selectmen to choose a member to serve on that committee.
Didn't we choose, yeah, didn't he choose her?
The District Communications Committee.
With, um.
Are you the board of selectmen's?
Yes, how?
Okay.
Do we need to reinforce that one more time or take a motion?
Is that one, is that, what is that for? Is that for, um, can you read that out?
Do you want to read it aloud? It says, um, attached please by the agenda for the next District Communications Committee meeting scheduled for Thursday, December fifteenth, six thirty P M. at the high school library. The main focus of the meeting will be to continue working on proposing changes for the regional agreement, as well as some initial discussions about the FY eighteen budget process. It would be helpful if you could provide your suggestions for the regional agreement in written form to be shared with the D C C. Props can be made if you will send your list prior to the meeting to Patty Morelli. Um, I would also remind you that at our last meeting, it was requested that one selectman, one finance committee warrant advisory member, and the town administrator for each town be named to serve on a working group to clarify and propose language that articulates landlord-tenant responsibilities.
But that's something different.
Yeah. I would like to establish this group on Thursday, if possible. So Tracy said, would you please ask the board of selectmen to name someone to serve on this group? This is from, um, the chair, Dina Sullivan.
So what that is, is they're gonna come up with a landlord-tenancy type agreement? And honestly, I, I sit on the District Communication. They want to set up a separate agreement between the district and the three towns, like a landlord-tenant, except for Salisbury, because I think the district owns Salisbury.
You mean for Triton itself?
Between Triton, yeah. And I think it'll help clarify what we own as a town, like we have Newbury Elementary School, what, what we will pay for, what they, what they won't pay for.
As we start into things such as that, and as we start into you going as the designated person to look at restructuring the agreement.
Well, that's a separate issue.
I know that, but it's still part of the request tonight of what we're talking about. It's gonna be really hard for one person to make their suggestions in writing about what they feel about the Triton Regional School Agreement without having everything go through the board and everything else.
Right, well, that's what we kinda have to talk about. I mean, I'm gonna go to this meeting on Thursday, Thursday night. Damon's coming.
Nothing you can say, because we haven't, we haven't gotten through enough along any of this, so we're just gonna have to sit there and think.
I can ask questions, but can't speak from the board.
Well, I mean, you gotta, if, if we, if that thing gets changed, and it gets changed in such a fashion that is being spoken about, it could certainly change the amount of money that we could be expected to pay. And I can tell you one thing, we paid a lot of money for a very long time.
Yeah, but I, I think the changes they're, they're promoting right now, they're asking right now, it had nothing to do with that piece of it.
All right, then, why don't we do this?
But the town of Raleigh has a lot of, they don't like a lot of those changes.
Why don't we do this?
We didn't like a lot of the changes when we had to scrape and cut budgets. I mean, I've, I've been on the board long enough. I can remember we had to come up with two hundred thousand dollars out of nowhere.
Well, that's what happened to Raleigh.
Huh. I don't ever wanna be in that.
Why don't we do this? As you go to this meeting, and I think it's gonna happen to all the other towns, too, you're gonna take notes and anything else, and you're gonna have recommendations of what's gonna be before us, and you'll have to bring it back to the board.
Well, I already did that once. I brought it back to the board once, and I haven't gotten, we haven't had it on the agenda, we haven't had any feedback from them. So I'm gonna go to this kind of, this meeting Thursday night, kinda be like, oh, we didn't talk about it.
Which is fine, which is fine. You're, you're gonna find that there'll be a lot of times when this town probably doesn't wanna enter into something that makes it more equal.
I don't know if it's making it more equal is the goal of what they're doing.
Well, it's, it's to make, as I understand it, and we'll find out.
So, okay, so that being said, we're, I'll, I'll go there tomorrow night, and I'll, I'll sing that song.
And it's the board, because it's on Thursday.
Did I say tomorrow? I'm sorry. Well, there's a school committee meeting tomorrow night.
Because I remember going to one of those meetings when they swapped from per student to the formula that we have today. And I said, if we vote this in, what's to stop you from changing it down the road back to the other way?
Yeah, but Chuck, Chuck, hey, I don't wanna muddy the waters. They're not talking about that right now.
Okay.
Okay, I don't wanna talk, I don't wanna muddy the waters. They're not talking about that at all.
But you're a good person to go to the, but just, but just be super careful that, you know, you buy yourself.
Oh, Damon's coming.
All right, but you have no idea of what the rest of the board really feels, so be careful.
Um, but I do want to ask you guys, who wants to be on this other landlord-tenancy thing? Because I don't wanna do it. I'm on the renovating, I'm on the meeting.
To what end? What is their goal?
I don't have that in front of me. We had, I came, I brought that to the board once.
To clarify and propose language that articulates landlord-tenant responsibilities.
Make a motion to, unless you have reservations about your chairman on it, I'll, I'll take that. And if someone wants to go with me, they can jump aboard that motion.
Motion to a point.
Wanna go?
I'll go with you.
All right, so we got, we got two people going, so make a motion to J R and I.
All right, I move that Jeff and J R tag team on that landlord-tenant relations committee.
Sorry, Chuck.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, good.
And was there another committee they needed, too?
I've had enough committees.
That's it, right?
Letter from the Commonwealth of Mass. This has been before and before, and as I read it, six months ago, you were supposed to do something. I don't know if we've done anything, but I'm not sure what we're supposed to do.
Is this with the Comcast?
Well, this is your Comcast cable communication. And I mean, we do have now a communications person, you doubt?
Yeah, no, this here, can I speak, speak to this?
Yeah.
Speak to me.
Um, so we are, our contract with Comcast is coming due in twenty nineteen.
Yeah.
So what they're asking us, this department is available to advise you regarding your duties and rights during the renewal process.
Right.
We are entering into the renewal process.
Right.
And they're just letting us know that.
Yeah.
So my recommendation is take all this correspondence from Comcast, because there's a lot of it here, and send it to the media committee to have them look at it. And then we meet, the media committee meets on Thursday morning at ten thirty. I'll be at that, at that meeting.
Is Susan on the media committee?
Yeah.
Good.
And Tracy's coming to the other meeting, too.
Yeah, so when we get, when we get letters like this.
Tuesday morning at ten thirty.
Susan might be able to look at them, too. And I think you clarified that, but, you know, if you read that.
And Tracy actually has.
If you read that, if you read it, you know, as it's stated, it is asserting that we should absolutely be doing something.
The department recommends the issuing is already complete, it's ascertainment process at least twelve months, and no later than six months prior to the expiration of its cable license.
Yeah.
So our cable license expires in twenty nineteen. So we're two years out, so we're fine. And Tracy's already contacted an attorney.
Sometimes things take us longer than two years.
I know, but they can't.
Thank you for that, I apologize.
So, I mean, she's already spoken to an attorney, and this process is already, it's already.
So that clarifies it. Now is my question, what are we doing? What's it being and how we're doing it? So it seems like we're at least moving in the right direction.
We can, can we make clauses and put it in the media committee's mailbox, so we can discuss it by the doors?
Long as Tracy and Susan and everyone do what's good.
Now, we've been, we've talked about some of our frustration on this board in the past with Comcast, their continual raising rates. Is the media.
Yeah, that's going up, too.
Yeah. Is the media committee gonna look at Verizon FiOS, you're getting another company in here, as a, at least put out the offer with the expiration so that we might have some competitive bidding versus just signing on to the continual taking money out of the pockets of our constituents?
Well.
Are there any other towns that have?
West Newbury is fine.
Any other towns in the region? No?
I don't know about any others, but I can imagine.
A few years ago, the media committee did contact Verizon to see if they bring FiOS here. And they're, they're no longer laying it.
Ask them again.
Ask them again.
Yeah.
They're no longer laying it. Um, I know there's a, there's a concern with declining revenues with Comcast because of the satellite T V business. So the budget that we get with, from Comcast, the quarterly payments that we get from our constituents, they expect that to be on the decline slot. So it would be great if we had FiOS. I mean, I can remember, I live on the Byfield-West Newbury line, and I remember when I walked over to them, and I knocked on the window, and I said, you can, I live right over there, can you come over there and lay FiOS right over there? He said, no, are you in West, West Newbury or are you in, in Newbury? I said, no, I'm in, I'm in Byfield. He said, we're not going. We're done, this is West Newbury, it's the end of it, we're not laying any more FiOS.
Yeah. We'll try and find someone else to fix it.
Oh, yeah.
It's worth exploring, I mean.
Yep.
Comcast is, Comcast is what it is, but it certainly seemingly has gotten expensive. It seems like we've had to do box after box upgrades. I mean, I'm not getting any better clarity or service, or, I mean, so.
I just like it to work.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
My team's messing up horribly every time.
Wi-Fi, Wi-Fi, I will throw it in the air and hope it works, I mean, so anyway.
Yeah, service is.
And that's from, and that's from the board of selectmen?
Do we know it?
So that's, that's, that's getting a little serious. Uh, we have a letter from, um, Wadia, and it's just a letter to, um, is their annual operation report. It shows the amount of students and the cost and what their core curriculum, you know, how they, how they, uh, discusses how they run the school. They certainly seemingly are doing a good job. We have a letter from Mass D O T Bridge Inspection on the Central Street Bridge, and I'm gonna throw this right to you, Chuck. I read it, and I couldn't tell if we're in good shape, bad shape, or half decent shape. Everything's coded in fours and fives and sevens.
Really horrible.
The pitch is horrible, too.
Yeah, it, it does. There is a, you can picture like a cornset hut, cold with the river, and then they pour concrete all around it.
So it's just a half, it's just a half cover?
Yeah, they did that many decades ago, and the tin is rotting. So you crawl underneath there, and you take a look, and it looks really, really bad. The things we don't know about is, does it have rebar in it? Does it have wire in it? We don't know who built the bridge, how long ago it was built. I mean, you gotta remember, that was a mill bridge, because the woolen mill used to be right there, at that old section.
Was that eighteen ninety or something, and they rebuilt it in, like, two thousand?
We did the guardrails going across it maybe five years ago. Yeah. And it's kind of on our site right now, but we have two other bridges that are right in the middle of rebuilding. And just as soon as they're done, we'll set our sights on this one.
You know what it says? It was, I guess, was it built in eighteen fifty and rebuilt in nineteen hundred and rehabbed in two thousand? Zero, zero, I guess, I mean, there aren't any records.
Yeah, there are.
They're, they're over in the trailer.
Also, there's pictures of guardrails that show a section that is just hanging out. That is a removable section so that we can get in and work on the dam and on the river, sloopways and stuff like that. So it looks a heck of a lot. It should be attached a lot better, because somebody could catch on that. And I'll bring it up to James's attention to get out and take a look at that, for the water to come, goes in there.
Yeah. So they may have forgotten to put stuff back last time they were working there.
You know what we should do on things like this, when they come before us? We read it, Chuck read it with maybe a little more clarity, because he's, he's up on these things and he's, but you know, maybe James can come sometimes on these things from now on, and when he shows up, and he can give us a little more clarification, so we don't, you know, so we walk out with a little more.
I have him, um, in discussion now to come before us to bring up the parking in Byfield Center. So maybe we can bring it up on that particular day or night also.
What's wrong with the parking?
Uh, we wanna rearrange it a little bit, uh, make some parking on both sides of the road. And some of it is gonna encroach on the park. There is American Legion Park that goes around the post office.
I don't understand what's going on.
Um, real quickly, um, post office is right here.
Yeah.
Okay, we wanna put some eight or nine cars in this way.
In the park?
It's, we own from the edge of the road fourteen feet out anyway. We just want another five feet into the park to make it in case you get a really long car.
This is for the Grange parking, or?
Yes, uh, plus also, you gotta relook down the road, because there's going to be, um, the rail trail coming in there pretty quickly. Would need parking for that.
Where's the rail trail coming?
Uh, the railroad tracks.
Ah.
Yeah.
But if that's there or down.
You could access it from there easily.
Right.
The only thing is, what The only thing is, when we start to do stuff like that, and that's non-parallel parking, I mean, that, that's gonna take some thought. I mean, we've, we engineered it over there, did we go to Merrimack Valley when we changed the, where, you know, we made the streets one way and everything else?
Well, they were involved in that whole process, yeah.
I mean, is, is parking get to that level?
Parking was the one thing that really didn't, didn't get into the mix on that, on that project.
There's also some parking up by, around by the monument. And we wanna put nose-in parking there, and then parallel from Lud Street down. So as I say, it's a whole plan, we're putting it together, we're still, you know.
Okay, 'cause my, the only thing.
It's going to the town lawyer, I've been to Martha with it, we're gonna go to Capitol Planning, we're, we're doing all of the due diligence.
'Cause my only fear is, when you have something that's non-parallel, those guys are backing out in the street.
Well, the precedent's already been set, because that's exactly what the post office does.
Doesn't make it right, you know, and.
Yeah, didn't we just have the guy look at it, the guy that put the four condos in at the church? He just did it.
That was up the street, yeah.
Yeah, he just looked at it, we just looked at, he just did some kind of a study, didn't he?
But my argument with that, Jeff, is when was the last accident?
Well, we haven't had that there.
From the post office, from them backing out, it's been there decades. So, but, you know.
I mean, as long as, I mean, you're, if it's coming to the board for the board to make a decision on that type of parking, the board's gotta know what they're doing.
That's what I'm trying to put together now.
Yeah, and it, it's what liability the town will have for putting an attractive set of parking in there that could become a nuisance. So as long as you've got that all figured out, it's fine.
What's, what's the benefit of having the parking?
I mean, probably need parking there.
Is it just for the Grange Hall, or when they have?
No, not just for the Grange Hall, there'll be other parkings there, there's a Sunday morning, there is the religious church right there. I forget what the name of it is, but they will be able to park there. As I say, the rail trail eventually will be there. There's many, many uses for parking, and they're parking on the sidewalk now anyway, so.
I'm not, I'm not being hot, it's just that, I'm always worried about parking, it's my thing. When they came with the rail trail, and they wanted to stuff some parking, remember on, on?
I was directed.
Yeah, they said no.
Yeah, I said no.
Yeah, that was a no.
Yeah, they wanted it on the park.
No, they was gonna be off the street, but the doors were about gonna open on the street with kids coming out.
Yes, yes, I remember that.
And I'm just worried that when selectmen advocate for that, I don't know, and if you're working with Ginny, she's gonna say, we're gonna have town council sanction, and I'm fine with that. She says we don't need engineering, and we don't need some kind of way or whatever, besides us saying it's okay, that's fine. So that's for me, 'cause then the town's safe for any private litigation, so.
The only reason I'm pushing this now is we're gonna be paving that road with any lock next fall. I would like this done in the spring, maybe the summer, and then we can pave two.
Like I said, if Ginny lets us go.
Right.
With the boards.
Yeah, it's gonna land on her desk this week.
Yeah, then it's fine.
It's gonna be free municipal parking, is that a good thinking?
Yeah.
What are we gonna do with the trash there?
Hello?
Well, I mean, like I said, these are things that'll come up, but I think the hurdle's gonna be, whenever we get into stuff like this, we gotta find out if we gotta bring any engineering in.
Yeah, and you said you've been meeting with Martha and the planning board about.
Yeah, well, as I say, James and I are still getting a plan together. We're gonna meet tomorrow, try to finalize it, spread it out to everybody. So, as I say, this is just a heads up, it's coming.
All right, just to clarify, we've had some conversations, it hasn't been before the planning board.
I just wanna.
I should have come out the board and the committee report.
We'll be fine, it's just that, like you said, as long as.
It's change.
No.
That's it, it's change, you know?
Whenever, like, I, I, I appreciate the fact that you're thinking about something, 'cause you're over there and trying to, it's obviously getting congested, and it might be nice to do something. And you've kinda got it rolling, but just as long as town council gets into the fact of what we need for this board makes a recommendation, I'm fine with that. Because whenever usually we get into things like that, like even down the island or anywhere else, you gotta go get engineering, and engineering costs.
Probably have to have, we'll probably have to have public hearings on it, right, Martha?
The other thing that.
There must be some process.
It's our land, we're up, I mean, all parks have parking, it's that simple.
Well, let's just, let's wait and see what happens. I'm, I'm good with whatever happens, long as we're in the clear, as a board.
Got it.
I wanna make sure it also fits with the master plan as far as open space uses and things like that, because parking's always a weird thing that way.
I would, I would definitely think we would have to have something that let the neighbors know that the people that live there, that this gonna, might be, this change is coming.
Well, I mean, that, you know, whatever, whatever works is works, but I mean, what Chuck's trying to think about right now is, just as long as the original thoughts follow whatever is the prescribed way we, and the only reason I'm talking like this is that on the planning board, and it's something, it seemed to move awful fast. 'Cause whenever we did anything like this, it was, it was a process. And were you on the board when we changed the direction of the streets in Byfield?
Thankfully, no.
Well, that was, that was.
Painful.
Well, I mean, everyone complained.
Yeah.
I mean, it was like holy natal, so you, you're never gonna get thanked for this. You might get thanked, but then you're not gonna get thanked, and so we need to have everything in the world, so, all right.
As I say, it's still in the initial stage, so.
Well, and, and I think, and I think as long as we follow whatever we have to do, it's fine.
All right.
All right, my gosh, we're not gonna have any Fox Call or Sports, Comcast is doing it again.
Raise the prices, cut the service.
All right, and the next letter is telling us we're gonna need new boxes.
Yep.
And then we have information on price changes, so this is all communication that is available for anyone that might want it, and it's with you, Ellen.
It is, and Susan knows it's been getting all of this.
All right, so.
It's in block, okay.
Is there any other questions from the board on any of the communication? Then I would move to review meeting minutes, I didn't happen to have that in my packet, I probably lost it.
Yeah, I didn't have, mine packet ended at correspondence.
My clip broke, so I could've lost it, you know, so.
So I've moved to table November fifteenth minutes.
No, they're from, they're from the last meeting.
They were the last week's packet, but they're not in tonight's packet, 'cause I got locked out, sorry.
I haven't read them, so I can't.
Things happen.
You got it right there?
No, 'cause I, I just.
Were you there?
Yeah.
Okay, that wasn't there, I can't go. Is that the only one missing?
Motion to.
And Chuck, it was the fire board.
November seventh.
Just take one, two, one more.
Yeah, motion to table November fifteenth minutes until next meeting.
Is there a second?
Sorry.
Sorry.
Any discussion, all those in favor, don't be sorry.
Aye.
Aye. Warrants, motion.
Motion to sign.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting updates, executive session, motion to adjourn.
So motion to what?